All right, it is our December 16th, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Education. Call us to order at 6:30 and let's start with our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. Secretary Meyer, can you do a roll call for us, please?
President McIntyre.
I'm here, good evening.
Vice President Campbell-Boitelle.
I am here.
Treasurer Stewart.
Here.
I'm here. Secretary Meyer, Trustee Frazier.
Here.
Trustee Mayberry.
Here.
Trustee Maurer.
Here.
We're all here.
All right, great. Let's go ahead then with item four, our adoption of our agenda. I'll pass it over to you, Dr. Campbell-Boitelle.
Right. I bring motion 64 that the agenda be adapted as presented.
Support. All right, we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell-Boitelle, supported by Ms. Meyer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. I did forget to welcome our superintendent and our central office leadership team tonight. I was like, wait, I'm trying to race through that, but so glad that everybody is here tonight. I know we have a really important agenda item, few agenda items, and just glad to have you all here.
And if I may prep the board and the contestant in the audience, if you do indeed choose to hire the young man back there for comms, I would like if he and his family would please come up after that's done to stand behind the board to get a picture.
Great, thank you.
There's your warning. If you've got anything in your teeth, go fix it.
Put your lipstick on, yeah, right.
All right, let's go ahead with our next item, which is our consent resolutions.
All right. I bring motion 65 that the board accept the consent agenda items for approval as follows. 5A, minutes of December 2nd, 2025, special call meeting of the Board of Ed. 5B, overnight and out-of-state field trip request. 1, Model UN Conference in Ann Arbor, Michigan from January 15 through 18, 2026. 2, NHS Aerospace Competition in Sheboygan, Wisconsin from May 7 through 9, 2026. 3, NHS Girls Varsity Tennis Tournament in Midland, Michigan from May 28 through 30, 2026. 4, NHS Girls Varsity Tennis Tournament in Holland, Michigan from May 1 through 2, 2026. 5, NHS JV Boys Hockey Games in Traverse City, Michigan from December 27 through 28, 2025. And 6, NHS MASC State Leadership Congress Trip Student Congress from February 21 through 23, 2026. 7, Northville Academic Games in Ypsiloe, Michigan from March 12 through 14, 2026. 5C, 2026 District-Wide Roofing Repair Awarded to Sheena Roofing totaling $69,595 funded through the General Fund. 5D, 2026 Roofing Repair Consultant Services awarded to BTA totaling $6,500 funded through General Funds. 5E, Partial Roof Replacement for Moraine Elementary totaling $770,100... 7,070 and 1...
No, $770,000.
Once you get stuck in the...
Yeah, once you get stuck in the...
$770,100 and Silver Springs Elementary totaling $671,200 to Royal Roofing funded through BSSF. And that's the sinking fund. 5F, Roofing Consulting Services awarded to BTA for Moraine Elementary totaling $20,300 and Silver Springs totaling $15,312 funded through the sinking fund. And 5G, Change Orders totaling $185,224.28 for the WAN Fiber Route Modifications funded through the bond 2023. 5H, Bill Warrants totaling $2,293,868.93.
Support. Okay, great. We have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell-Boitelle, supported by Ms. Stewart. That was a lot. A lot of this, we had conversation about during our committee of the whole last week and talking about the different funding sources for some of these repairs. That would come through the General Fund because sinking fund dollars cannot be used to cover repairs, but we can do replacements through our sinking fund. And then we also have our bond that we continue to spend down. The other items we discussed under other previous meetings or received other notifications about and updates regarding. Any other comments from the board about that very long consent agenda? Okay, all right, let's take a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you so much. Next, Ms. Meyer, Communications.
Yes, we've received communications at MPSBOE@northvilleschools.org as well as the Wayne Risa Board Highlights from November of '25 and the Northville Youth Network November Program Report.
I did want to just highlight a couple of things from that. One, I just wanted to give a shout out to Wayne Risa because they earned a system of distinction by Cognia, which only 35 schools or school districts got throughout the country. So I thought that was pretty incredible considering the work they do there.
Yeah, Karen, I know you're deeply involved with Risa and the fact that Cognia is something that is in the public school space. But that would indicate, then you said 35 ISDs, so that means if you think about it, every state has a varying number of county, think of it as county. But in Michigan, gosh, how many counties do we have? Any Michigan historians? Anybody want to use Google AI and help me out? Yeah, okay, we'll go with that number. So, but imagine multiplying that by 50 and then only 35 ISDs actually earn that distinction. So that's, I'll make sure that Dr. Colbert knows that you brought that up.
I also wanted to give a shout out because it was mentioned in there and I thought we should highlight is that we have a new state superintendent.
Oh, that's right.
Glenn Malako.
Malako.
Malako, thank you. So he was just, he just started like a week or two ago.
And he's from Dearborn and I've been fortunate to get to know him through my last three and a half years in Wayne County. And, you know, yes, is it self-serving to say, am I happy that a Wayne County superintendent is there? I am, because that means we'll have his ear even more so.
Yeah, for sure. I wanted to lift up, did you have anything else?
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I didn't want to take...
No, you were about Wayne Risa?
Nope.
At Northville Network?
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to lift up that in November it was, I don't know, eye-opening to see that they had 17 referrals. I think that was the largest number this year or so far this school year. So we continue to see that increase. And it stood out to me that their top reasons for referral to Northville Youth Network included substance use and behavioral health, depression and anxiety. So that really stood out to me. I was also, I was able to attend the first day, which was that, the first day movie. That was the partnership between Northville Youth Network and the NEF. And it was great that they had the count of 50 other parents and families, parents and kids. That was, that was a really well-attended evening. It was at the Marquee. Really appreciate that community partnership, also with the Marquee that they were willing to open the doors and host that event. And then the Overbooked Book Club, I know you had mentioned that, but to see that 30 people had attended that.
It was, I think, the largest attendance of any Overbooked Book Club that I've ever attended.
Well, yeah, that's great.
Not to be a downer on those wonderful things, but I did want to say, I saw, I appreciate you mentioning that about the numbers for the Northville Network. We're always so fortunate, glad to have that partnership with them and have them in our community. I did notice an increase, which is good that parents and families are reaching out and asking for those referrals. But, you know, normally was we go into the winter and then into the, into the school year, the numbers go up. Just to see them remain steady throughout the fall and even increase, I think is concerning.
Yep, agreed. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that. We are seeing that increase, right? The need, the need is, is in our community.
Yeah, I think it was also pretty telling that the book choice was the anxious generation. And so many parents came in and like that was what drew them there.
Yeah.
So.
It's great. Yeah, it's good that people are seeking out support and resources and having conversations.
Yeah.
Awesome. All right, anything else from Communications?
No.
Okay, thanks. All right, Dr. Weber, Superintendent's Report.
Absolutely. So before we go into a bit of a report on a multi-year approach that, that we've been going at to be good community partners, I'll leave that out as a tease there for people. But I want to say yesterday, hopefully, parents in the community found the launch of our website and branding. The feedback has been super positive and really enjoying seeing our community displayed in a way that I've gotten to know and enjoy it in the past three and a half years from everything. And it was an intentional move on the video that we did, an introduction video to feature special education in there in the search function to further denote that one of the very proud things I know the folks to my right and the folks I'm able to serve with to my left are proud of is our service of students, regardless of the level of need they have. And we'll always be proud of that. But the feedback loop is wide open on the website, so feel free to jump in there. And thanks for the community members who found a link or two that wasn't working. We were able to fix that pretty quickly. So with that said, I'd like to go ahead and queue up the team over here to presentation on the community partnership space over at Hillside.
Hi, good evening. I'm glad to be here. Obviously, we need to discuss the wonderful step forward in enhancing our access to mental health services through a partnership with Trinity IHA Health. And tonight, we're presenting to the board an MOU with Trinity Health to provide mental health support and increased care ultimately to help foster more resilient and healthier community. And this actually is a partnership that began with our previous Director of Special Services. And I was fortunate to get connected with Trinity and continue this on. And so we know that mental health is a challenge and we're all concerned about it. We heard that a few years ago when we brought forward a potential partnership with U of M and, and the RAS Center. And we've been actively really working together on these issues of mental health for, for a number of years. And we have heard the community, we've heard the students. We had students here last week presenting to us, sharing that they are really hoping that we can help reduce the stigma and increase access for them because the struggle for them is real and we heard that from them. We're grateful for the advocacy that's happened and, and the urgency that we feel around this from our entire community. And so speaking up on this is, is really important and we're, we're grateful. So our response and, and really, we'd like to think of this as, you know, a layered approach to providing access to services. We've, we've increased school-based services this year with our behavioral coaches in our elementary. We've engaged in a new program with the Mentally Strong Mustangs. We continue our programming with other partners, as President McIntyre mentioned, trying to help engage our families in, in ways that they can help early identify the issues and get treatment for their, their children. And we've also provided staff training. We have staff training on our crisis response and our threat assessments and recognizing when there are students that are in, in need of support. So we can link them to the, the supports that are in our community and in our schools. Trinity is an additional layer, expanding access to professional mental health services for students who need it. And so I, I know that with this board, I do not need to go over all of the statistics that exist around the mental health crisis. But, you know, I, I did add some of those statistics and we can take a look at them. Nearly 1 in 3 adolescents report persistence feelings of sadness and hopelessness. We know that, that suicide is the second leading cause of death for students. And, and when this was actually broken down, I was surprised. One youth suicide every 80 minutes in the United States and one adolescent attempt every 50 seconds in the U.S. We know that our numbers of risk assessments have gone up. So locally, we've, these are statistics from last year, but we've, we've done a number of, can't read that. Thank you, Team 123, risk assessments. And, and so just overall, thinking about 3 in 10 high school students in Michigan reporting having poor mental health. And that rate is higher in girls and LGBTQ plus students, so I'm thinking about that. And then we have some Panorama SCL survey data that shares that self-efficacy has consistently been our greatest area of need in the past three years. The fall of 2025 results indicate that only 53% of our students feeling, report feeling a strong sense of efficacy and, and which is lower than the national average. So clearly, we have some data to dig into there. We also know that schools play a critical role in early identification, access and connection to care. So the process for this MOU and the service within our, our Hillside Community Partnership space. Trinity will be included as a resource for parents and caregivers and staff members to seek out mental health services. And, and that really means children of staff members when I say that. Parents and caregivers would be required to call the Trinity Outpatient Behavior Intake Center to schedule an appointment for these services. There's no online scheduling, there's no walk-in scheduling. It really all has to be done through that, that intake center. And that's a phone number that we would give to families if they express that there is a need. This is in addition to the other resources that we provide when families seek out services. We, we provide resources like Trinity, or I'm sorry, Northville Youth Network, our partnership with Hagera and some other local resources that have worked well for our families. Trinity will bill insurance for services and they do, as we check this out, accept a wide variety of insurances and including Medicaid and our Aetna EAP. And so some additional information on this is really around the, the services that Trinity provides are from a licensed social worker, master's level social worker. And want to be, the services, so the therapist would be in the space no earlier than 2:00 PM, no later than 8:00 PM. So there's a window of time and, and they make their own schedule. So they're, if I had mentioned before, they do online and are virtual and in-person sessions. And I guess it's important to be very clear with those that might be interested, this is not a school-based health center. This is not a school-based health center. This is not the same as our MedSport contract for our, our trainers. So that MedSport, because this, this was asked, our MedSport is a service and we provide space. So we have more control over that service, but we have, just so people are aware, we have a contract with MedSport as our athletic trainers and it does look a little bit different because they are actually in the buildings with our students and they have access. That looks very different than what this is set up to be. And again, the data indicates we, we, we're in a mental health crisis and we know that there are barriers to care for kids in this community. And really, highlighted again, the purpose of the MOU is to provide the school-based mental health services to reduce those barriers and promote well-being throughout the community. And, and that's the why. There's some highlights that I pulled out from the MOU that might be of interest to those that would like to know more information. And it basically says the therapist is a licensed social worker, master's level social worker. And that IHA really oversees the hiring and employment of that individual. They're, they are solely responsible for scheduling and managing all of the appointments. The school staff or the clinic staff can be there, like I mentioned, the time. It's an hour before the school day ends up until 8:00 PM. And it's two, up to five days a week. We are beginning with two days a week and that's what we've agreed on. And then our, one of the benefits would be that our Northville students would have access to preferential scheduling at the clinic. Questions so far? I want to pause.
So I think, I want to ask if this is a, is a term that maybe explains more to an audience about the intent. And, and so I spent some time thinking about what school-based services infers to a lot of people hear that term. And, you know, they come to many different conclusions that may or may not be on target here. So in my mind, when I was reading the, the details in the MOU, I, and this is a legitimate term, co-located services. And that just says something more specific about what's happening in my mind. And maybe this, I don't know, maybe you have a reaction to that term, but it's, they're co-locating their services in a defined, isolated, you know, setting and it, that is in our school building. But in reality, there's really no, it's, it's, it's a boundary. There's a, there's a non-porous boundary around that. That's a locked area. You can't get in from the outside without coming, you know, without getting buzzed in. And, you know, it seems to me that this is not the typical, the use of school-based sounds, it feels like it's more a part of the milieu of the school. And this, that's not so with this kind of an arrangement, as I understand it. Am I getting close to what the intent is? Okay, so this is some space that's being rented, is rented and co-locating some services, some mental health services that just increase the convenience for our families. But families have got to call the main office, they've got to purchase the service with their insurance or their checkbook, and they've got to agree to what's going, you know, what they're purchasing with the people at IHA or Trinity, right? And then they can take advantage of the convenience of not having to drive a long distance or maybe, you know, or putting up with traffic to get to one of the places that IHA is delivering these services. Other than that, they go to Ypsiloe or somewhere. I don't know, all the different places. So that's, it's, that's, I think, you made those kinds of, those details, you said them out loud. I just wanted to say them back to you with some different words that maybe resonate with anybody who's thinking that this is a redo on a more comprehensive school-based health center, which, you know, is a very different kind of an arrangement. Is that right?
Okay, thank you.
Can I jump in, Dr. Campbell-Boitelle?
Sure.
I'm just going to clarify a bit of your language too that passed in as you were thinking. You mentioned calling the main office. I know what you meant. You meant calling IHA.
IHA, right.
I think people might hear main office and think they're talking about the school. Oh, that's, that's not how this works. This is a community partnership space. Think about when you go into Target and Ulta is in there. Ulta's its own thing. Ulta's using Target space. This community mental health space or this community partnership space is used by NEF. It's going to be used by Center for New Hope this summer when they do their grief camp because they've outgrown Mayberry. So this is just like calling any other healthcare place and saying, "I'd like to schedule my child for an appointment with..." It's McIntyre who happens to be a clinician as well. So I think we need to make sure that we are moving away from using the word clinic because that's not what this is. There are, I was there yesterday for a tour. There are no exam rooms in there. There is no medical equipment in there. It's an office space. NEF is right next door. There's a large space that people can come in and have meetings. I imagine that we will be meeting there with Northville Cares. It's, it is a space to be utilized by the community. So I do think that there's some misconception and I can see why. I think, you know, in our, in our IHA MOU, we do use the word clinic in there and we need to remove that for making sure everybody understands it is a community partnership space. It's not a healthcare clinic.
Good point.
Right, I think the other, yeah, appreciate that. I think we've also talked about other partnerships that we might be interested in joining as well or encouraging, right? You mentioned New Hope. I know that Northville Youth Network sometimes also runs out of space to be able to host workshops or groups or any type of opportunity that supports our kids. And we see the need is there. So thank you for clarifying that. I think that really helps to define it as it's a location. It's a space.
And much like the district does things like rent the senior center next door for a dollar a year to the township and the cities for community use, just like at Hillside. Many people in and out of the rec center there, people enjoy that and using those facilities as well. And, and really what's important, I know, to this board is not only have you been outstanding stewards of taxpayer dollars. I look at one of the best audits I've seen in this district in years and years and years and years as far as being on point and credit to Devon and the board for doing that. But we have always had a history here of being not only generous with our space and allowing folks to use it and to be part of that. But in order to, to make this space, which was originally a tech center, which thank goodness for Banchero, Steve Banchero, if he was here in the previous boards for higher, purchasing Fog Street, there's no way that that space would have been big enough to handle everything. So using grant money to repurpose this space in a way that provides safety with the man trap is what they call it in business and the security there as well as the feedback we're getting from NEF, who's now been there for a couple of months. And a few board members went on a tour yesterday. Meredith, thank you. You were one of those folks. And as well as Ron and Melissa and got to see the community groups like New Hope, Northville Cares. And this should also be a heck of an indication to the community. When those organizations don't have enough space to have meetings and they look to our community public schools for space, like, one, that should be an indication the need is there. And you pointed it out here on the report. But also, I want us to be the type of school district that says, "You're welcome to come here. You're welcome to have a meeting at 7:00 o'clock at night in that space because it's there for you." And it's easy for people to find because it's not, you know, Hillside's location is wonderful and 8 Mile and Center there. It's easy to find. Even those who are directionally challenged can find the highest point in Wayne County on the corner of 8th and Center Street and find a space there. So thank you for all of your comments.
Additionally, the IHA will, you know, adhere to HIPAA and, and that information is not shared back to the school district unless a parent chooses to sign a release of information where there can be two-way communication. And that would be really up to a parent to choose to do that. And again, you know, that, that information, we might know that 16 Northville students reached out for care. We won't know who those students are by name. So that's the confidentiality piece. And then the services may only be offered to students or minors under the age of 18 with prior written permission of the student's parents' guardians' consent and where appropriate and/or required by Michigan law. So just wanted to read that statement out loud. And that IHA is, is responsible for managing all the consent to treat documentation. And, and all of that goes through the intake center that parents would call and they would have to verify, you know, they have to get insurance authorization and, and go through those steps. And we've all been there with scheduling appointments, you know, in, in various types of healthcare places and, and we know the process for that.
Yeah, I think it's their Epic Portal or something like that. Is there a typical portal that any other IHA patient would use? Okay.
I have a question relative to incoming new patients because you said that the priority would be given to Northville Public School students. However, I'm assuming as we roll this out, it's new to us giving referring information. So is there going to be some sort of window of time where it's allowed where other clientele from other, you know, if this person, this clinician already has clients, but they're not coming in? How, how would that work in terms of making sure that we are leaving, having, being able to prioritize our students as it gets rolling?
Great question. That, that's, you know, they manage their scheduling, but there's the guarantee that they will have space available as priority for Northville students.
So does that mean that they would just come more frequently or you're starting with two days?
Starting with two days.
What did it increase to three days if they need more space?
This would be a new therapist building, you know, clientele and so, you know, there's, they, they manage scheduling and, and in the MOU states that priority is given to Northville students.
And Karen, that's a hard one to kind of, I guess, quantify because think of, like a therapist's schedule is like a puzzle and you might have, and you know, Lisa knows this as well, you might have an opening on Thursdays at one and that might be the only opening you have, or you might have something open, you know, whatever. So there, there's no, you know, necessarily linear process for scheduling, but if I'm understanding correctly, that all goes through IHA and they handle that scheduling if they have a scheduler or the therapist would handle scheduling on their own.
Yeah, that, I guess that's my concern is that, you know, if you're coming over and you just, you already have a puzzle with some pieces in it. We're going to go with that metaphor that there's going to be
I think you said it's a, it's a new clinician, right? Doesn't have a caseload yet.
Yeah, they don't have a caseload yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's helpful.
So that'll be a lot easier for that person to prioritize Northville families and communities. And the other thing I think we, we need to remember too is, you know, this isn't, when we talk about referrals, this isn't a referral coming from the front office that's sending their student down to this therapist during the day. This therapist doesn't start until 2:00 PM, so pretty much close to the end of the day. But also the referral system that we talk about is referring, providing more additional referral access to another space, just like we might give a therapist list, we used to do this in the high school all the time. We'd have families come in and say, do you know of any therapists? We used to have, I don't know if they still do this because I don't work there anymore, but there used to be a document that said, here are some places, you can call these people. So it's, it's a similar thing, this is just one additional layer of, of referral that we are giving our families access to.
Thank you for bringing that up because it can be quite a trial to try to find care.
Yeah, I would say referral might not be the correct word, but it's just another option.
Resource.
Resource, another resource.
I mean, that, that's the, that's the language in the therapy space, so we use that word referral, but it can often have kind of a negative connotation depending on the situation. And I'm talking more than I usually ever speak at board meetings, but this is my, this is my wheelhouse. You know, I don't have a lot of quantitative data, but I do have a lot of qualitative data. Being a therapist and having to turn people away, it's, it's heartbreaking. I mean, I can't tell you how many people contact me and say, you're the first person who's ever responded to me. Nobody answers me, nobody calls back, nobody, you know, any of these things. And it is so difficult to find care, especially for students because of their limited window of time. If you think about the time that they have, it's weekends or it's after-school activities when parents are shuttling kids around to other places. I don't work past two o'clock anymore because I have kids. So that's a whole span of time that I can't see adolescents anymore because it doesn't work. And most of my friends who are therapists, it's the same situation for them now too. We're, we're young-ish, have growing families, you know, so this is just another way to make sure that we are getting kids the care that they need if their families decide to go towards that for them.
So here's an interesting statistic, just to validate, you know, what you've, you've just shared, 70 to 80% of youth mental health services are accessed through schools who have a list of suggestions or available resources. And that's 70 to 80%, it's coming through that pipeline. And I think that's what we're trying to create here is a richer pipeline, another option for families to consider and then the ball is in their court. So.
And, and just to piggyback on both of your saying, usually when you get to this point, time is of the essence. Maybe it's critically, maybe it's just so you can, I'm sorry to minimize, I would get emotional about this, but time, you need, you need someone to act fast and the more resources we have to give our students so that's possible
Yeah.
the better.
I keep thinking too about middle school, right? I think a lot of the families that were at the first day were middle school families. And I also, I don't know about overbooked, but I think when you're, you know, you've kind of come out of this like beautiful elementary phase and all of a sudden your kid hits middle school. And I always think of early intervention is, it offers us much better outcomes for kids. So the opportunity that the space just happened to be in the middle school, it's scary, right? When you need support for your kid and you're not sure, like, who is a vetted clinician? Who is a vetted organization? If you're coming out of that elementary bubble, you're like, okay, wait, what? What's next? So I, I think that the fact that this space, the fact that it was in the middle school, it just seems like it's a, it's a really nice opportunity for this particular age group and all of the other directional things that, that Dr. Weber mentioned, right? That it's top point on the hill, center part of our town.
It's a beautiful place, too.
It is, it is.
And Karen, I appreciate your emotion. I was with a person who's been a longtime employee here in Northville Public Schools and, and she was curious about it and she broke down a bit and talked about the kids that she's lost as she's been here in our community. It's real. And so I'm grateful that you showed vulnerability in bringing that up because it's not easy.
Well, I work with middle school students every day.
Yeah. It will keep you humble.
And I'd like to just say one more thing, just, you know, I know this is a downer, I guess, well, definitely. The worst day of my professional career happened my first year here at Northville Public Schools. On the last day of school at the high school, I was tasked with having to sit down with a freshman and tell her that her boyfriend had died by suicide the night before. The last day of school, when we went and sent everybody home for the summer, we had no process to help those kids, to provide the kids' support, to provide the teachers' support and to sit across from a 14-year-old girl and have to tell her that news was one of the worst days, not only in my life, but absolutely the worst day of my professional career. Every community needs mental health support. It doesn't matter what your socioeconomic status is, it doesn't matter what your race is, your creed, what you believe, everybody needs that support. And if you think that we don't, or if you think that we have enough of it, there could never be enough when it comes to people's lives. And I'm done.
Agreed, well said.
Additionally, in the MOU, there's an exhibit A that outlines the services that IHA can provide and services that they are not able to provide. And, and so I can read through those if necessary, but you can all see them on the screen.
Ken here.
So, thank you. The MOU has an exhibit A and that exhibit A outlines the services that IHA is able to provide and those that they are not able to provide.
Sorry, it's my mom.
And so those services include mental health screening, assessment, comprehensive person-centered treatment, followed with appropriate services, mental health and substance abuse interventions and referral for other services not available at the clinic. So if you think about a student that might come in, let's say with an eating disorder, this is probably not the best treatment approach for a student like that because they need more of a comprehensive plan, dietitian, more intensive therapy. And so, you know, that, that would be something that the clinician would obviously assess and determine if, if what services should be more appropriate for them. And then IHA services will not include abortion counseling services or make referrals for abortion services, prescribing, dispensing, or otherwise distributing family planning, drugs and/or devices.
Wouldn't that be true for any sort of prescription because they're a social worker and not a doctor? So they can prescribe any medication from that clinician?
That's true, but it was important to outline this in this MOU.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Just to eliminate any, any confusion that this is not a school-based health center.
Yep.
And so the Hillside, oops, me. Oh, did we skip over the, there we go, Hillside Construction. We, I, I hope that each of you get an opportunity to come to the space because it is truly a fantastic area. We, when we did the renovations using our grant funding to secure the space, there was a, the door system was installed, which provided this secure vestibule in the existing exterior entrance. So just to kind of picture this, coming into the vestibule, there is a, a door system with a key fob, so you have to be actually buzzed in, which you're all familiar with what that looks like in our, our buildings anyways. There is a key fob indoor system going into the Hillside Partnership space and there is a key fob going into the building. So if you can picture that, that's, that was the renovations that were done. There are also two offices in that space that had, they had doors into the partnership space, those were closed off and doors were added to the exterior space. So one of those spaces is Richard Taber's office and the other is our SRO at Hillside's office. So they're both, which is really lovely to have our SRO close to that door. And then the additional space in the back has some flexible seating and, and just flexible furnishings within the larger space so that we can move tables and chairs. So if we wanted to do yoga, we have an open space, if we wanted to hold a meeting, we could do that as well. So we wanted to ensure that that was a flexible space.
I just wanted to say thank you for accommodating the tour yesterday, that was really good. I've been in that space a lot in its previous iteration because it was kind of a warehouse for PTA, spirit wear and all sorts of miscellaneous happenings in there, you know? A rotation of different offices that kind of got shuffled in and out. And it's, it's good to see that a space that, you know, was used, but it didn't really have a purpose. So it's good to see the transition of that space. I was excited to see the security levels getting into. And one thing that really stuck out to me was, you know, Hillside, their school day doesn't finish at two. And so what happens at two is if someone comes in and buzzes, it's going to go to the main office to vet that person before they even get into the secured vestibule there. And so it was, it's good to see the different layers of security. And in addition, the, the bathroom space, it was, I didn't even know there was a bathroom back there to begin with. And so to, to have construction come in and open that bathroom up and, and secure it from the rest of the building. And so it really is, that bathroom is only for that space. So I, I was just really pleased with how the renovation turned out and the fact that it was done with grant money. So I, I, I'm, that always makes me happy.
And Devin.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Makes Devon happy as well.
Exactly.
Thank you for that and I forgot to mention the rest of that there. And just a little timeline of the process, I mentioned this, this really, this partnership started with our previous director of special services and, and I was able to have an initial meeting with Trinity back in October of '23. And we've, we've had a lot of meetings and discussions since then, a lot of board updates. I won't read through all of these things, but I, I just want to ensure that folks know that we've had a lot of conversations and brought this information to the community through various opportunities to talk about what the space might look like, who might be in the space and, and just thinking through how to, how to best provide the mental health services that we, you know, our community said that they, they desperately wanted.
Yep.
Well, I would like to thank you for your efforts and bringing this mental health, mental health partnership to Northville. I am very pleased that we will be lowering the barriers for any children who need mental health support by making this partnership available. I also want to commend you for listening to community feedback because as Ken mentioned several years ago, we had talked about proposed health clinic. And I remember the primary criticism is that we didn't need a general healthcare clinic, but we did need mental health support. So thank you for listening to the community and bringing this to fruition.
Thank you for lifting that up. That's an important point.
Yeah.
Other than that, are there additional questions?
Thank you for sticking the course, right? That it's, I mean, to see all of the work, right? The planning meeting, like what are the tech needs, what's this need? We kind of reconfigured that space again. So it's, you know, we even kind of dreamed up, okay, who else in our community would want to use that space? And NEF, you know, we were outgrowing our spaces here in Northville. So when I was there for an NEF meeting and they're so thrilled, right? It just seems like it's such a welcoming space and it just makes people feel at ease in that space.
It will make you smile to know that I reserved it for our Students Versus Stigma group that's coming in January, so I think they'll be excited to be there and see that as well.
Yeah.
So who handles the space signing?
Right now I
Reservation.
I am.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
But this is truly our first, like, use with a, like a group that other than, you know, NEF is there and they can certainly have access to it and eventually New Hope will, will be able to be in there a bit, so.
That was the vision for the space, right? When we talked about grant money, that is focused on mental health services and safety. It just really fits the bill for all of those.
And being a good community partner that vestibule then allows different groups to go in there at different times of the day while after school and not be concerned about any opportunity for people to go beyond that, that door itself there.
I know when I think of like people getting to use the forum at the high school, right? That it's completely open to the rest of the school.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, the high school is an amazing entity. It's like a small, it's bigger than where I grew up. It's massive. Ms. Hoppenstett and the rest of the team, and, and thank you so much. And thanks to the board for questions on that as well.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you giving us that very comprehensive presentation, much appreciated. All right, public comment, first opportunity, thank you. All right, is there a first opportunity for a public comment? I think Matt Wilk.
All right, thank you, member of the board, members of the board. I appreciate your hard work on trying to resolve mental health as an issue. However, this entire proposal is predicated on a canard. Trinity Health has $25 billion in annual revenue. They can go wherever they want. And as trustee Maurer indicated, the limiting factor on mental health is not building space, it's people, it's people. And if you think that they're going to take a very scarce resource, it's mental health professionals, and relocate them to Hillside Public, Hillside Middle School, you're wrong. This is subject to the same problems that it was two years ago, which are procedural and also substantive. So let's talk about the procedural one first. Under people like Mary Kay Gallagher, we work very, very hard to be very open with our community. This is not. This is the second time in December, in the middle of the winter, as approaching Christmas, in fact, to the day where a proposal is put out and subject for approval without that proposal seeing the eyes of anywhere, anyone outside of this room. We never did that. We would always want to engage the public so that they could go opine, because we have people in our community that, that talk about this professionally, right? And we didn't do that again. This was noticed to people at 3:34 yesterday when it was added to, on the, the agenda. We had plenty of time to advertise our new website or when we have candles or riding on horses. on horses, but we didn't have time to tell people, hey, this is a big issue that parents are going to want to learn about and they're going to want to read the MOU itself, not a summary and not a description, certainly not one where we try to modify the terms. This is a big problem. It erodes the trust with the community that we worked very hard over a long period of time to build. You have to be open with everybody. Make your case. You guys made a very good case here about the need for this. But you make your case to the public before you put the issue up for vote. That's the procedural issue. We've been through this again. It's really erosive to the community. As far as the substantive, we have the same problem we had before. Trinity is a big company. They allow students as young as 14 to schedule appointments on their own. If you have, as you mentioned, my chart, Epic, you cannot see your 14-year-old child's appointments in that chart. There's no transparency to parents. Okay? That's a big problem in something that is located in a school. That may be their procedure, that may be their policy, but is it our policy? Most certainly, under my duration, was never our policy. We're open with our parents, we're forthright with our parents. This is not. I found it fascinating that clinics only going to be open from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m., so there really aren't any synergies other than a middle school kid staying after school. Because a parent coming to Middle, Hillside Middle School at, say, 6:00 can just as easily take their kid to the IHA building that's located seven Hagerty, four miles away, or U of M Clinic also there and Corwell also there. In the presentation, there was a reference to referrals. We kind of said, well, this isn't what they're doing. But you see in writing, it says they can make a referral. So again, looking at it from my perspective of, hey, what can be done without parental consent? And the answer is a lot of things, a lot of things. They can talk, they can have a substance abuse screening, they can get a referral to another doctor within their facility. And again, if my chart is blocked off, can't see it after that, parents aren't going to know. Not appropriate. They're trying to drive business and I appreciate it. I, I know it's a big issue to solve, but providing space without those limits set in stone is a disservice to the community. Thank you.
Okay, the next person is Peter Hoffman.
Hello, my name is Peter Hoffman, Northville MPS parent, just recently actually right in this building. However, in my day job, I'm actually the program specialist for OK2A, the operational supervisor for the school safety tip line. And for those of you who are not familiar, it started in 2014 primarily as an anti-bullying hotline. However, I can tell you that I personally review every tip that comes into the system. I review and approve and ensure that the proper steps are taken. The numbers that we have seen show that you're absolutely right. There is a mental health issue. Out of approximately 10,000 tips that we've received, based on our numbers up to November, 32% of them or more are mental health-based. 1,600 of those, almost 10,000, are suicide, are suicide calls. Another 325 are self-harm. And another 1,600 approximately are lumped into the other category, which is unfortunately where we do have to lump a lot of other mental health calls. We see this time and time again. Thank you for taking this up. This is very, very important. Any mental health that we can get for our K-12 students is better than no mental health. I understand that the proposal is not perfect. I've worked in government for 13 years. There is never a perfect proposal, but it has to start somewhere. There has to be a building block. Thank you for doing this. It is vitally important and it is something that we absolutely need and the youth of America need. We started as a program that saw more and more tips that were related to bullying, planned school attacks, violence, fights. Realistically, the top tip categories we see in week after week, month after month are suicide threats, are other mental health issues, are drugs and substance abuse problems, are, you know, anxiety and significant issues. And any steps that we can take as a community, as a school district to address this problem are going to be vitally important, not just for us, but for our kids. So thank you very much. Please keep up the good work. Please make this happen. Thank you.
Next, we have Krista McKendles.
Hello, I'm Krista McKendles. I have a couple of kids in the school system. Hello. Is it on? Okay. My comment is not really related to whether or not you guys should be moving forward with this because I haven't had any time to look into it. I just heard about it. And so that, my comment is about the transparency. I've reached out to both the board and to Dr. Weber numerous times to find out what the use of that space was going to be. And every time I was told NEF and possibly, you know, New Hope, just a common area, I asked very specific questions if there was any other medical partners that were being, that you guys were entertaining the idea of working with. No response to that. So I, I mean, I have my emails right here. On September 3rd, I wrote all these questions. I sent it to Dr. Weber and to the board, slightly addressed at the meeting, but not really after this. And then I followed up, like, three times with Dr. Weber. I never heard back to clarify about the potential, you know, the potential to partner with any kind of, like, a medical institution. Trinity Healthcare is one of the largest healthcare systems in our entire country. And I'm just wondering, you know, is this going to lead into working with them in other areas? I have a, I'm sure I have a lot of questions, but like I said, I haven't had any time to look into this whatsoever. And I would appreciate it if, you know, the community was given more time before you guys have these meetings. I'm not saying this is a bad idea. I just don't think that right before Christmas, finding out, you know, just slightly before this meeting is really fair to the community. And honestly, like, I have my, my emails right here. I asked this very specific question and nobody answered. So that's my frustration. Thank you.
Any other cards? Next, we have Jennifer Terpstra.
Hi, I do want to say, I don't know any of you personally, but thank you. I know you spend a lot of time, a lot of hours, and I can hear the concern for students. And I know that I have two students at middle school at Hillside and one in elementary. So I know from professional backgrounds, it sounds like, and your own experiences, you're trying to look out for the well-being of the kids. That being said, my concern is, like the last mom who spoke, just the lack of transparency in that I'm not a mom who's in the school volunteering every day. I have my own life and responsibilities, but I try to keep tabs on what's going on. And Northville is great about communicating things. Sometimes I'm like, oh, another email, right? We get emails for all the events, everything, and a lot of district-wide, hey, this is going on, that's going on, this program is available. So I'll tell you, my frustration is just that as a mom who's, I kind of keep up with things and think I'm, you know, mostly aware of what's going on, that something this substantial hasn't been a district-wide, hey, look, we have this great opportunity coming up, we want to tell you about it. It just feels, especially based on my experience of trying to keep tabs in '23, that this process was not as open. And I'm hoping before any official steps forward occur that you guys will allow some time and more engagement with parents and the community rather than making it what feels like as a mom who's maybe on the fringe of what's going on at school, a very quick decision that does impact our kids. Like, we, we get so much information and everybody's busy, including you guys, but I would really appreciate some more time and time to, to have a discussion rather than any decisions being made right away. Because, like, it is important and it's a big deal, but I think that it merits more involvement. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next we have Erica Peterson.
So I'm, a little bit of this is going to be a repeat of the last two people. I have two students here at Hillside and I do appreciate, as a mom, not having a space where you could come that's in town, that you don't have to drive very far. There are things to this that seem good and appealing and mental health is, you know, important. I have a child with anxiety, so I understand the need for, you know, a, a possible space like this. However, I have a lot of questions and the language that has been presented so far does not answer any of them. And I do feel like, again, that there hasn't been time for myself, for the community, to engage with the board, to really understand exactly what is this space going to be and what it isn't, right? So again, I've engaged with this for about, you know, I learned about this at about 5:00 today and made my way over here. So questions of, you know, are there instances where there's going to be school staff that are referring students to this without parent involvement or knowledge? I have a 14-year-old, an eighth grader. Is she going to be able to make an appointment for herself and talk to somebody without me knowing, right? Is there, this, we said, and there's language in there that, that students will have a priority, but does that mean that there's going to be other people from this community or other communities coming onto campus to use this space? So, and that's, again, just the top of my head in the last hour or so. So I feel like there's a lot of things that are not made crystal clear in this language that I think need to be addressed. And I think the, the community and parents need to have time to engage with us, to be able to really understand what this is going to be and if we feel comfortable having this in our community and for our students. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Great for your comment. All right, one last public comment? All right, thank you. Okay, Tammy Kane.
Tammy Kane, I've got a daughter in, at the high school. Just kind of to follow up on some of the things that other commenters have said, I think my big key thing is, the last time around with the clinic, it wasn't even just the clinic, it was the transparency, the communication, and the way that was all handled. And I even specifically came after the fact and talked about that specifically, even when the clinic got, like, kiboshed by U of M, of which, you know, we were never told why, but move on. Anyway, so there was a transparency issue there and I'm looking from the outside looking in and I feel like we have the same situation where I'm looking at the timeline and I'm seeing things, a couple of things. I think we need to improve the communication because there might be people who think this is a really good idea, but if we're not informed and we find out about it through a social media post rather than an email to the district, that's not, that's not a good way to communicate with your community members and your parents that you're trying to, you know, get everybody on board of something that you feel is really important, you know? So you have that issue. And then the other thing I'm looking, and I'd like to propose this, something for you to consider, is committee of the whole, I think that all of our board meetings should be recorded. It would be really nice, you know, I'm hearing you say you went through down to the agenda of everything you covered and you're like, well, we talked about it last week at the committee of the whole. Unless we come to the committee of the whole, we don't know exactly what you discussed, we don't know the conversations. And it would be really helpful if you're having robust conversations at those meetings to have it recorded where we could also learn and, and, you know, be informed from that meeting as well. So that's just a suggestion. I think the biggest thing, I'm sitting here looking, is just the transparency, you know, trying to move forward and, and be aware of what exactly is going on. So, thank you.
All right, any additional public comment cards in the survey? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, then let's move to number nine. Thank you, everybody, for public comments. We always appreciate hearing from the public. Next, we have our new hire, Communication Specialist. I will hand it over to you, Ms. Meyer.
Yes, I'd like to bring forward motion 66 that the board award a prorated one-year probationary non-affiliated contract to Anthony Ryder for the '25-'26 school year as presented.
Support.
All right, we have a motion properly presented by Ms. Meyer, supported by Mr. Frazier. Excited to hear about Mr. Ryder.
I'm excited to tell you about Mr. Ryder. If Mr. Ryder could just kind of give away sort of... Awesome. So, as you know, we are replacing our Communication Specialist who moved on to another position in the private sector. I'm not bitter about that, but I am happy for, for her and she's doing very well. We went ahead and posted for this position and we were pleasantly surprised at the number of applicants that we got, more than we ever imagined. The last time we posted for this, we had maybe 15, and of those, maybe two or three that, that, that were viable candidates. For this position, we had almost 80 candidates that applied and of those 80, 60 of them were pretty darn good. And of those 60, we talked to about 20, 22, 23 of them. And we drilled it down. So, so Anthony came from a pretty competitive pool. So let me tell you a little bit about him. He is a very highly qualified candidate for this position. He has a background in broadcasting, multimedia, and communications. His experience as a multimedia journalist, radio anchor, and social media specialist demonstrates his ability to manage content creation, community engagement, and, and live communication across lots of platforms. We've seen him do it. He brings some excellent technical experience in audio/video editing, camera operations, broadcast equipment. And he has definitely demonstrated, and we watched lots of his, his clips on, on news and, and so many other social media areas. And when he did his performance task for us, it was pretty fantastic. He's got, he's very creative in his script writing, anchoring, storytelling. He is, he is definitely a consummate storyteller and he weaves the, the why into everything that he says and talks about. So we're pretty excited about that. His proven success in digital media includes building a YouTube channel with over 1.2 million viewers, which is pretty awesome. He can definitely grow audience and deliver impactful messages. I had a great time talking to Anthony's references. They were so excited about this opportunity for Anthony and the skills that he brought to their, their organizations. They described him as hardworking, creative, and consistently positive with an energy that expires, inspires everyone around him. And throughout the interview process, that was something that Darby and I remarked on, you know, we're like, is he for real? Because he seems so genuine. And, and, and he is, according to everybody that he has worked with and for. We're, we're just thrilled to, to welcome Anthony to the role of Communication Specialist. His combination of professional communication skills, technical proficiency, and community-focused expertise will make him a great fit for the Communication Specialist position. His family is here with him, his girlfriend Meg is here with him. And on behalf of the central office administration team, we recommend that the Board of Education approve a non-affiliated contract to Anthony Ryder for the '25-'26 school year. Any questions?
This is amazing. I mean, I think it's really cool to be able to hire somebody right out of college, right? And into this role. I'd like to know if he, well, we haven't made the approval yet. Could we make the approval contingent upon, can he get us connected with the Detroit Lions? Because it feels like there's a lot of exciting things happening. Does he have a relationship with Rory or any of these folks?
So, so Anthony came in and I happen to have, and I've, I've never worn anything with Lions blue, but I had this new shirt and I had this Lions blue shirt on. And he said that I'm Lions number one fan. He said this to the interview committee and we're like, that's nice. As it turns out, he is the Lions number one fan. In 2023, he was not named and there, his Instagram page has pictures of him with all these Lions. Down at, at, I don't even know where, thank you, Ford Field. Sports are hard.
Not Lions number one fan.
He really is, he really is the, the number one fan there.
I just found your, your resume so impressive, given your age and how long it is. I was like, wait, when did he start? This is some, so you've been motivated in this arena for a very long time, so we're very lucky to have you.
Yeah, very great. That's cool. Okay, well, does anybody else have any other comments or, all right, let's go for a vote then. All in favor of hiring Mr. Ryder? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, welcome aboard. This is very exciting.
So Anthony, if you and your family, if you'd like to, I saw you were very proud, come up and stand behind the board. We'll get a picture to introduce you to the community. And I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. I see on here you did some kind of package on school projects. I see on here, you did some kind of package on school projects, top play-by-play calls. What's your number one?
Oh, I wonder what calls that I made during.
Really? Your own? So, what was your favorite call that you made?
The one, I think the first one that's on there is senior night for the girls division one game. Quite a ways out and it was, it was a pretty electric moment to put them ahead. So, I think that was another one call.
Well, one of the things that I'll say is being in the role you're now in here, it's, it would be like a, Ken, I was just talking to Katie about this, like being a beat writer for like the New England Patriots when they were at their peak. There are so many good stories here. This community is filled with so many good stories. Good people who care about their kids. And no matter what, we may differ on our approaches sometimes to it, but I am unequivocally, I know that people here care deeply about their children. And you get to help tell that story, which is a beautiful thing. And then I found out you and Meg walked the same halls that I once administrated at the South Lion High School and Millennium Middle School in South Lion. So, before anybody thinks like, we knew each other and that's the only reason you got the job, you're much younger, I was long gone, I don't know you. And this is actually the first night getting to meet you. But could you please bring Meg and your family up and maybe introduce them to the board and sincerely welcome? And you can stand right behind these folks here and then we'll get a picture of you.
We're all about community connection.
I know. You weren't ready.
Yeah.
Welcome, welcome.
You got it? Oh, he got the 17. No, I don't.
Good. You'll teach us.
Congratulations.
Yes. Congratulations. Very exciting.
Yeah. We're glad to have you. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. I'm very proud. It's a wonderful moment here. Congratulations. Don't let it send you too big, right?
I don't know. I wanted the same thing.
I had a lot of. All right. Thank you. A lot of things. Go ahead.
You did. You did like two and a half pages.
All right. Welcome aboard to Mr. Ryder. Good day.
That's exciting.
And you can feel free to go, like you're not obligated to stay. Thank you. I mean, maybe there's a nice dinner out there for you and your family. You should take them. Little pro tip for you.
I know. All right. All right. Our next item then is human resources. Northville Public Schools and IHA Health Services Corporation memorandum of understanding.
Yes. I'd like, oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to bring forward motion 67 that the board authorize the administration to enter the agreement outlined in the memorandum of understanding between Northville Public Schools and IHA Health Services Cooperation as presented.
I support. Okay. We have a motion 67 properly presented by Ms. Meyer and supported by Dr. Campbell Voitelle. Is there any additional conversation? I feel like we've said a lot of important things, but definitely this is our opportunity to, if we have any other questions or any other comment? Put a lot of it on the table. All right. Well, let's go ahead and vote then. And if we have anything else we want to say after. All right. All in favor of approving this MOU? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries 7-0. Unanimous vote in support of expanding access to mental health care services in Northville Public Schools as a space for people to come get support when they choose to, if they choose to.
Thank you, Darby, for bringing this to us and for the tour and, you know, all the background. There's, we've had a lot of questions and, you know, thank you for being available to answer all of our many questions along the way. So, appreciate it.
I just wanted to make a teeny tiny, like grain of salt comment. I noticed that your presentation was in the correct font and colors of our new branding and this has been all the slides.
Look for more of that.
I've got to upgrade my readers, though, in order to read it. Yes. I think I would like to just say to the community that we really work to serve you. And I hear and listen to your comments about transparency, but we trace back your ask of us to the night when every single person that came to the mic said, this is what we need. We had a very strong unified message from the community that mental health services was a shared need that was, you know, not, was left as a to-do. We felt it was on our to-do list. So, for the lack of, it feels a little uncomfortable to hear that people feel that it's lack of transparency when we think we're responding to the community's ask. So, process takes a while. MOUs take a while. I really tried to make, I'm just personally saying, I tried to make a point that this is a co-located service that operates in our, in an office space, but the parents are the gatekeepers. You must take, you know, you must initiate the effort if you so feel that it would be useful to your family. And really, that's, that's the way we're looking at this. And so, I don't feel like I want to engage in everybody's comment, but I do, I do feel strongly that you, you left the gauntlet on our table to do something about mental health services for our kids. And so, this, this was, this was really the impetus for us to try to work out the details. And we care very much about our ability to communicate. We have a new communications specialist who's going to be sensitive. What a, what a meeting for you to be present for this kind of an exchange with our community. But we're not only student-centric, we are community-centric. And this is a big priority for us. So, let us, let's keep working together on going forward for our kids and for our community.
I appreciate saying that. I think one of the other, some other stakeholders that aren't in the room tonight are also our staff, right? We hear often from our staff that our kids have emotional struggles, they have needs. And we know that our teachers have a lot of, a lot of tasks on their plate, a lot of responsibilities. And if we can offer another space, another opportunity for them to know, it's not their job to carry that. Their job is to educate our kids. So, how do we continue to break down the barriers, open up access? I appreciate the perspective, too. As a therapist, I know we have wait lists where I work. I know that many, I mean, we work with adults mostly where I work. Adolescent care is hard to come by. And if there are people that are saying, yeah, give me a space to do it and I'll keep digging away at it, we have the space. Let's, it's, to me, the right thing to do is to continue to, you have reduce, reduce risk, reduce risk, reduce risk. I've been to multiple funerals of children who have passed away for various reasons. And that is one of the reasons that I ran for school board to begin with, was because I knew the amount of stigma that is present in this community and how much, as we start peeling back the layers, that people actually do want our kids to be okay. So, how do we do that? It's not a perfect system. I wish that we could hire hundreds of therapists. And we do. We, at the place I work, we continue to hire more and more therapists. We keep opening up locations. There are always wait lists. There's always a greater need. So, if we have a space, space is sometimes hard to come by. It's expensive. I don't know if people know this, but reimbursement rates for health services are not great. People like me, we do this work because we care about people and we want to help people. And if I never had to go to a funeral or hear about another funeral of a child that died by suicide, I would be, I would, that would make, that would just, I don't know. That would, I would know, job well done. But I know that it's not going to happen like that. We will lose more children to suicide. We will lose more adults to suicide. And those ripple effects just go beyond this room. So, if we can do something, this is our next thing that we can do. I hope we can keep doing more. I appreciate you lifting up. I also know our teachers are very concerned for our kids. They're not in the room. Thankfully, they're taking the night off from this space. But we, but I believe we also owe it to them to continue to offer resources that at least give them the chance to continue to focus on education and know that someone else is lifting that heavy lift for mental health. So, thank you to the board for continuing to be diligent in approving these, these services to expand. I feel like we've had so many conversations and I know we also have other big things to take care of tonight, but I think this is a good next step for Northville. And I'm really glad to be seated on a board with folks who care about mental health as much as I do.
And this MOU is for a one-year period. So, that's a great opportunity for us to reconvene in a year and discuss what it's looked like in practice, in reality, and going forward.
Yep. Okay. Any added agenda items? Okay. Any additional public comments that people would like to give tonight? Okay.
She wants to make.
Yeah. Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm back. So, I just had like a minute to think about this since I literally just learned about it. But we feel like when we come up here and say that we're not happy with the transparency and then you guys answer with, there's a, there's need for mental health care in our community, it's not really addressing what we were concerned about. Nobody's saying there's not a need. No one's saying it shouldn't be addressed. We're just saying we'd like to be involved or at least told about these things in a timely manner. My concern is that I, I wrote very specific emails numerous times asking about the use of the space and nobody mentioned this. NEF is the only thing that anyone said. So, even when I'm proactively asking the questions, I'm not getting the answers. And then I find out right before a meeting that you guys are discussing this and voting on it. That is what the problem is. So, it just feels a little gaslighting when you guys say there's a mental health need in response to us saying, we don't feel as though we were given proper notification about this. Also, IHA Health Services Corporation, that is a part of Trinity Health. That's a huge healthcare system. Is this going to potentially lead to working with them in another capacity in the future? Because the design of the space of Hillside, according to the architectural plans that are online, says right on there that it's a health clinic. I have it right here. It's page 11, right on the plan, right here, says health clinic. So, it was apparently designed to be a health clinic. It might not be used for that right now. And, but, okay, so now you have some kind of a partnership with Trinity Health. I don't know. There's just a lot of questions here. And it seems like I answer, I ask questions and I don't get answers. And then I find out right before a meeting that you guys are discussing the very thing that I was asking about. That's the frustration. No one's saying we don't need to address mental health in our community. Nobody's saying that. We would just like to be a little bit more involved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have our next agenda item is agenda item 13. I would like to hand it over to you, Dr. Campbell Voitelle. For our closed session.
Yes.
I think that's you.
Okay. Motion number 68, that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Public Act 267, Section 8A, to conduct periodic personal evaluation of the superintendent of schools as requested.
Support. Okay. We have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Voitelle, supported by Ms. Maurer. This does require a roll call vote to go into closed session. So, Secretary Meyer, will you read the roll call vote for us?
Yes. Frazier.
Yes.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Maurer.
Yes.
McIntyre.
Yes.